Good evening, why don't we call the meeting to order? Everybody rise please. So before we start, preliminary announcement is that forty-three Linden has actually been moved to the April agenda. So if anybody is here for forty-three Linden, it's not going to be heard tonight. We'll see you in April. We dodged that bullet, Austin. Doesn't sound like there's anyone in here. Which means that the second item on the agenda is the acceptance of the minutes from September tenth, December tenth, and January fourteenth. Is there a motion?
I saw motion.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Minutes are adopted. The next item is the two-ten Holt Road. Come on up. And to the extent that this gets to a vote, I'm not suggesting that it is going to get to a vote, but you know, there's always that possibility. We're only a board of four tonight, so therefore would have to be unanimous vote. You do not have to proceed under these circumstances, but you are certainly welcome to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Kevin Fullwood. I'm an attorney. I'm a resident of North Andover, thirty-two year resident of North Andover. I'm also an attorney with a practice in Newburyport, Massachusetts, and I represent the petitioner in this matter, MMD Shooting LLC, and the applicant, Jen Thompson, who was present with us here this evening. We also have with us some others that I'm going to be introducing you to. We have our architect, we have our noise consultant, and we have a firearms safety consultant. And I'll be introducing them in just a moment. This is a continued hearing, Mr. Chairman, regarding our application for a special permit for recreational use in an industrial zone at two-ten Holt Road in North Andover. The board asked for some additional information the last time we were before you in areas concerning noise and air quality, structural integrity, safety, governance in operations of the proposed facility. And on the twenty-eighth of February, we submitted a supplemental and restated narrative along with some supporting documentation. And just this evening, in coming in and talking with our architect, he's come up with some other drawings that he's going to be presenting tonight along with some sketches from our noise consultant that'll better help the board understand what we're proposing there. So, and I'll be brief in my remarks. I'm going to be primarily talking about the licensing requirements and the operations and the governance of the facility, and along with the safety. And along with that, I have our firearm safety consultant, Jerry Gallo, who I'll introduce in just a moment. Our architect, Kelly Davis, from Port One Architects, will talk, make a brief presentation regarding the strength of the walls and the ceilings and the integrity to make sure that no bullets could escape the facility under any circumstances, and also talk about the air quality control and the HVA system that we're proposing be built in the facility. And we have our noise consultant, Jeff Cromer.
Cromer.
Cromer. I'm sorry, Jeff. And he's going to discuss noise control and has some information for the board, and will answer any questions about that. I'm anticipating about five minutes for me, Mr. Chairman, maybe five minutes or so for the, for Kelly Davis and Mr. Cromer, and then, you know, maybe fifteen minutes, whatever the board thinks is necessary for questions. Before I begin, I just, my remarks, I just want to tell you a little bit, because I did not do this the last time we were here, about our applicant, Jen Thompson. She's a North Andover resident for over fourteen years. She's married to Jeff Thompson for the past twelve years. They have two school-aged children, ages eight and nine. She has a bachelor's degree in finance and a master's in business administration from Regis College. She also has a license to carry and a federal firearms license. She grew up around firearms, and she really wants to create a state-of-the-art facility and range and retail operation, you know, with live shooting, also with air gun shooting, and with virtual shooting, along with training. And education, the education component is an integral component. Education and the safe and proper handling of firearms is central and integral component of this proposal for the use. And that's why Jen has obtained the services of Jerry Gallo, who I'll introduce in just a few moments as a firearm safety consultant. I think it would be a great thing for North Andover if we had another woman-owned business here in the community. That'd be great in and of itself. But I want to tell you on a personal note that I have known Jen and her husband Jeff for some time now, and I know that not only as a mother and a resident of North Andover, she's a very deeply caring person about this community. It would never propose anything that would be detrimental to the community. And I would say further that really it's in, it's in our best interest and in her best interest that all the concerns that were raised by the board during our last hearing be handled appropriately. That is with regard to operations and governance and construction and noise and the integrity of the building and the like. She wants to make sure that it's done the best that can be done for our community. And it's, quite frankly, it's in her best interest to assure this facility is safe for all who work there, all those members who join there, and all those visitors who visit there. The operations piece of it, really, we will need to obtain a license from the chief of police, who is the licensing authority for both the operations of a shooting range in the Commonwealth and for the operations in the sale of firearms and ammunition. And although we hope to get approval by the ZBA for a special permit, we're not presuming that we're going to do that, but we've already started the process with the chief of police. And as I said, he's the one who's authorized, who's in charge of the oversight, for the authority to grant the license, and he also has the sole authority, quite frankly, to suspend or revoke a license for any violation whatsoever. And so, once you're licensed to do, to operate a shooting range in a retail establishment in the Commonwealth, it triggers compliance of all state and federal regulations, and those are strictly monitored, I mentioned in the narrative, by the executive office of public safety and security, and also the Attorney General's Office and the regulations that go along with that. Any reports in terms of retail sales that, let's say a gun was sold there that was not supposed to be sold in the Commonwealth would trigger a violation. It would jeopardize the entire license of the operation up there. And so, anybody, I thought that, you know, anybody who knows Chief Gray, you know that he will do his due diligence before granting such a license. And I thought that some of you, at least, who had concerns about the process or didn't know much about the process, might be relieved and reassured to know that this is clearly in his province, the chief of police, and subject to his approval. So anything that the ZBA does or the planning board does with regard to our request for a special permit is subject to the approval of the chief of police. And we're looking forward to working with him with regard to that process going forward. And having said that, I just want to briefly introduce Jerry Gallo. Jerry's not going to speak at this time, but you know, in closing sort of my remarks, Jerry's thirty-four years with the Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms. He now is a certified instructor for the Mass. State Police Homeland Safety Act, and also with the NRA for basic pistol safety as a certified instructor. So glad to have Jerry with us this evening. And with that, I just want to turn over, reserve some time for questions, but turn over my part of the presentation to our architect, Kelly Davis, who's going to talk about one of the concerns the board raised last time about the strength of the walls, the ceilings, and so forth, and the air quality issues. Mr. Davis?
Thanks. This is some supplemental information that just gives a little more detail on, a little more detail on construction and...
I'm sorry, what are you going to add?
It's more detail on how those constructed.
And why wasn't this not in our packet?
I just...
I have a big issue with getting evidence stuff, especially of this nature at the meeting, because I review my packet and I do my homework. I mean, I'm certainly going to take it, but for me, having a new...
It's actually going to detail off things that were already said in the previous construction area.
Regardless, you had two months to give me this.
Kelly, if you want to take the microphone so the people at home can hear what's being said.
Just for a point interest, you had two months to give me this in my packet last week, so...
The point is, is that this is a substantial amount of material, and it is difficult for us to fully comprehend it within the size of this meeting.
I can speak for myself, but thank you for clarifying.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So for me, my point is, to have something like this, it's, for me, I have an issue with it, so I won't even look at it.
Do you want me to go over it, or...
No, I won't even look at it, so until...
Yeah, I'd like to present. There was questions above.
You can, but I just, I won't.
On the walls and integrity.
Well, the purpose of presenting this was just to get some specification data on certain product information and to explain how the walls are being constructed and how they meet ballistic and sound challenges. And so that's why we put this together over the last couple of days, so that I could give some more insight into what was submitted back earlier, which was just, essentially just a two-page narrative of how it was going to be constructed. So I can certainly just talk to the two-page narrative, or I can actually go into some of...
I think the sketch that you provided might be at least helpful to the board. That's not an awful lot of information. It's just a sketch to show how it's going to be constructed.
Point is, you had two months, so I mean...
Can we cover what we already said? Is there just our points with those questions?
No, I'm the only one that feels this way on this board. I've always have. I've been on this board for twenty-six years. I've always felt that way. If you present me something with a substantial amount of information, I have issue with it, so...
Okay.
So maybe just the two pages we already submitted, so it shows questions.
There's other people on the board who feel differently, so I mean, you've certainly, I wouldn't change your presentation to accommodate myself, so...
Just to offer a little color, Ellen, I mean, I share your sentiments, Ellen, so you're not alone in this. It's just that, it's just Sisyphus pushing this thing up the hill. It's impossible for applicants to get their act together for some reason. And so it's hard for me to, like, do anything about it.
I know.
So I would ask then, tell us what you feel we need to know.
The first two pages are just the brief overview narrative of what we thought were essential systems in the building. And then the next two foldouts are drawings that show the construction of the walls in the facility in order to give you an idea of what the quality of the ballistic material is and the sound transmission and absorption. So if I only just address these first two drawings, the first drawing is the first floor that shows, and it's color-coded, which shows how we're essentially encapsulating the ranges in solid concrete walls and ceilings, so that the, and on top of that, the layers of acoustical treatment that goes on the concrete walls and ceiling. And I can just let that speak for itself. Again, in the, like I just said, the ranges themselves are now a hundred percent encapsulated with sound acoustical doors and windows. And that's for the first two live-fire ranges on the first floor. And the second drawing shows the air gun ranges and the virtual theaters ranges upstairs. We also went over the acoustical qualities of these walls and the acoustical treatments that we're doing for the ranges, and I'm not sure if you want to hear from the acoustical consultant on...
Can you speak to the HVA system, because you presented that on two-twenty-eight, what you're going to be using for the HVA system?
Okay.
What's it going to do for the...
There's a consultant we're using from Belmont, New Hampshire, who is providing two systems to the live-fire ranges. One of the systems is a self-contained circulating system that brings in, that circulates air from behind the shooters in the ranges and comes across each range and then is filtered and then recirculated back again. And that's a continuous loop of filtered air on the ranges. And the second system is just the air exchange that would be required by code. And that's part of, when you do see this package, it's, like I said, there are more cut sheets on what the equipment is.
And I assume the filter is a particulate filter?
It's lead, yes.
Oh, specific to lead, okay.
Now upstairs in the air gun ranges, there are no, they're not the same sort of filters because they're not required. And all the literature that I've researched in the last week and a half is, there's very little or no lead contamination on the upper-level ranges, the air gun, because it's essentially shooting various tiny pellets or BBs using CO2. So there is a protocol on cleaning and how the targets are exchanged. The downstairs ranges, live-fire, does have target systems from each of the shooter booths that can bring targets back and forth. There's literature in here about the granulated rubber trap, again, which was on the brief two pages that was submitted last February twenty-eighth, I think is that. Yeah, I'm sorry for the miscommunication. Essentially, I just took what we submitted on those first two pages, and I just elaborated and made it in more detail. That's what it was. Do you want to talk about acoustics?
Sure.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Cromer. I'm an acoustical engineer. It always helps when I'm talked in front of boards to just give you like a thirty-second background of me. I've got a bachelor's in mechanical engineering from Runcor Polytech, got a master's in ocean engineering with an acoustic specialty in Florida Atlantic. First job out of school was keeping nuclear subs quiet. I've been on seven aircraft carriers, keeping them quiet in addition to power plants and shooting ranges, and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I've been doing this for about forty years. So I've got a question for you. So rather than try to answer questions that you may not be interested in, I know there were some objections from a noise point of view, so it would help me if I could hear it directly what some of those objections were typically, so that I could kind of make sure I answer them directly. Questions on the, you know, questions on the noise from this particular type of establishment.
I think that generally, the board was just looking for, what's this sound like outside?
Outside.
As far as this travel, how loud is it going to be? Now, we've heard, you know, anecdotally from folks that were at the hearing, from the applicant and others, that it's whatever, fifty decibels at a hundred feet, you know, whatever, something, that's not the real number.
Right.
That's not the real number. But that's just, so tell us, just how loud is this to the outside world? To the inside, I'm sure it's going to be comfortable enough for the members. They're going to be wearing, you know, headgear or earmuffs, whatever you want to call them, whatever the right word is, frankly. So I think my concern, and I think I'm speaking for the board, is more about what's it sound like to the community, appreciating that there's not much of, you know, community nearby. There's residential going on, you know, in up the street.
Okay.
It's going to be audible from there.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you. So when you do get around to looking through the packet, there is, I did some calculations, and I did some range calculations. So you're right, it's concerning, very noise outside, but also it's, you know, you have to be careful about inside. You want to make sure that, that not only the levels inside the range, even if they're wearing hearing protection, are as low as you can get it, no matter what they're shooting, but also there's some retail areas in there. You want to make sure that the sound does not necessarily get in, is not too loud going into retail areas and the other areas in the shop. So what I did was, I've got some data that I took on a couple of ranges, and I also took data from a good friend of mine, a guy named Bill Murphy. I don't know if you know him, but he's the head of the noise-induced hearing loss for NIOSH. I've worked with him for about twenty years. He did a lot of data on army ranges, so we've got data. So what I did is, I essentially took the noise levels of the guns inside, and typically, before you add absorbent material, if you're in a very highly reverberant room, which means there's a lot of echoes, so I could be standing here with a gun, shooting, and it could be, let's say, a hundred and forty dB, all right? And if I stand three, four, five feet from here, I could be listening and hearing a hundred and forty-six or a hundred and forty-seven, because the room acoustics adds to that. So that's why we put a lot of absorbent material in the range to lower the levels as soon as you get away from the shooter. And not only it lowers it for the shooter, but it keeps it from getting into the neighboring spaces. So you combine that with the concrete walls, which a twelve-inch and an eight-inch acoustical concrete wall has a lot of what's called transmission loss, which is how much energy gets from one room to another. So if you look at the calculations, essentially, the outside level on the back wall is seventy-nine dB, dB assuming that your gun is...
Is there a page you're directing us to here?
In this graph, yeah. There are numbers. It's after all the air conditioning stuff. So there's the Peerless Ultra Fan and Peerless, or after the Peerless, there's a diagram. Yep.
Is there a diagram? Is there a different DVD?
So what I did was, I took the noise levels from typical shooting inside. I did some modeling, added all the absorbent material, added all transmission loss from all of the walls, and I predicted the sound levels in each of the spaces inside the range as well as outside. So if you look at that seventy-nine number, that's seventy-nine dB that I predicted right outside of the wall. All right? So, sound, if you look at just normal physics, attenuates, and if you don't understand dB, dB is a logarithmic scale. So six dB is a doubling of energy, all right? The ear recognizes ten dB as a doubling of sound, but the doubling of energy is actually six dB, all right? So physics says that every doubling of distance, the noise levels will drop by six dB, not counting absorption from trees and ground or whatever, just straight attenuation of noise will drop six dB from a doubling of distance. So if you look at the next page, I went to Google Maps, and I essentially looked at the distance, and I was pretty conservative where the condos might be compared to where that point I predicted outside the gun range is going to be. And according to Google Maps, it's about nineteen-hundred feet, all right? I used fifteen-hundred feet. So if you do a calculation just on normal physics, again, not accounting for ground absorption or tree absorption, you will predict the noise level from the level inside the range at that condo, outside the condo, to be twenty-three dB.
And that's about the noise of rustling leaves, so it's still audible. It's not...
No, because typically, even in the middle of the night, in this residential area, with the traffic, even on Holt Road and whatever, your average background noise levels are going to be probably around thirty, thirty to thirty-five, maybe up around forty, even in the evening. So at twenty-three dB, if you were in a dead silent room, maybe you would hear it, but certainly not at the condo. Inside the condo, again, that's an outside noise level. You're never going to hear, in my opinion, my calculations tell me, at that distance...
So it's the whole background noise level?
Background noise level, you just put a monitor out where these condos are going to be, and do like a five-day monitor, and calculate what's called the L-ten, which is like, you know, the ambient noise level. You will probably get between thirty and thirty-five dB. So based on a calculation, you're not going to hear anything from that gun range outside of the, at that condo location. And if you look at the next plot, I just did a plot just for the heck of it, at the property line, right in back of the, where the gun range is, and even once you get to the property line about a hundred feet away, you're down from seventy-nine down to forty-eight dB. And that's just right at the property line of the building, right there. So I don't think anything inside is going to be very audible anywhere away from the building, certainly not at the distance that the condos are going to be.
Not writing anything in stone, because I know you're just doing...
Excuse me?
Not, not, not holding you to this. I'm just trying to get kind of a ballpark kind of thing. What I heard you say is, from those nineteen-hundred feet, you used fifteen-hundred feet, which I think is like artificially amplified, whatever this number is. But you also said, without ground absorption. Would you have, would you have an expectation, again, I'm not holding you to it because it might not be calculable, but if there's ground absorption in those fifteen-hundred feet, like, what's a ballpark for what that could reduce, this twenty-three?
Three, four dB.
That's good enough for me, thank you.
And again, remember, six dB is a halving of the power, or a doubling of the power, depending on which way you look at it. So three dB is actually, doesn't sound like much, but that's actually significant. Any questions on anything inside the range, outside the range?
There's no outside shooting, just inside.
No, just inside.
What upstairs?
There's, I also did some calculations downstairs, upstairs. I mean, they're planning on putting about, was it ten or, it's like eight-inch concrete floor, or ten-inch with another two inches of...
Twelve.
Twelve-inch. Yeah, so the transmission loss through twelve inches of concrete is average about between fifty and sixty dB. So you're probably not going to hear much upstairs either. You might hear, you know, like sixty-five to seventy dB. I mean, I'm talking at seventy dB. Well, I'm talking probably sixty to sixty-five dB. A washing machine or a dryer is seventy dB. So you may hear something upstairs, but you can always add carpeting, something. If it becomes too loud, there's other things that you, if it's louder than you like after they got done building it and did what they initially planned on doing, you can always add things like more absorption or heavier carpeting or something to be able to reduce those levels. But I don't think it's going to be a problem upstairs. And the only weak link inside is like right outside where they're planning on putting a window, but if you put acoustical glass with a space in it, you get about sixty dB. So right outside the window, it might be in the high seventies, but again, as soon as you get three feet away from there, you're down below seventy, which is high loud, you know, like in a loud restaurant, might be seventy-five or seventy-six, so...
Mr. Chairman, through you, Jeff had brought with him some material. Did you want to show them?
No, that was for Kelly, I mean, unless they're interested. I mean, there's absorbent material you can put on the walls to lower noise levels significantly, but...
Before we have a question, Mr. Chairman, I will say this, that I'm the one that's supposed to be quarterbacking this thing. I did not know Mr. Davis was going to be handing out that information tonight. As far as I'm concerned, we can do that as a chalk, depending on whether the board wants to do it that way. I can take those back, or we can keep them in your possession if you feel like you want. I know you were asking for some specifics, so I didn't object when he passed it out, but it certainly is not an integral part of, it's just an illustration to specifically show you what the walls are going to be constructed of, what the ceilings are going to be constructed of, and so forth, because I remember those questions, those specific questions. The other stuff that's in there is just different products that do that. That's the real thing, so...
Can we cover everything on the side in the first two pages?
So the objection is, I'm sorry to retread this. The objection is not necessarily having the information. Like, I think the board, I'm not, I am going to speak for everybody. The more information, the better. The trick is the timing. If we had gotten this with our packet last week, we would have had a chance to take a look at it and then had an opportunity probably to formulate questions in advance. Because getting the information now, I'm not suggesting that this is you as an applicant or the applicant as an applicant...
I'll take responsibility.
But just as a general matter, when somebody's throwing something at me at the meeting, and then they're telling me about it, they're telling me what they want me to hear. They're not necessarily telling me what I think I need to know out of this. They're not giving me the opportunity to necessarily challenge or take a deeper dive. So there's a little bit of suspicion that comes along with the well-intentioned, here's some information, that's three-quarters of an inch thick, and I'll give you ten minutes of exposition on it. That's well-intentioned, and the trick is that it's oftentimes, myself, received as, man, I bet there's something in there that I would have wanted to know about, or they're not telling me about. So again, I'm not casting that aspersion upon you, I'm just saying that as a practice that ends up being a reaction on my part.
I'd be glad to take that back. I mean, I can tell you that the material is...
But let's not retread that. What I said is, the board is not objecting to getting more information. I'm not saying, let's throw these things in the trash. No one on the board is saying, take this back. What we're saying is, we need the stuff in advance. So let's not do the, let me take that back kind of thing, right?
The only, the only material that's in there is the stuff that the architect and the noise consultant spoke to. The rest of the material, which I thought was one of the primary concerns, involved the governance, that is, the licensing, the operation, the safety. You had all of that on February the twenty-eighth. I presented that. I don't know if the board has any other questions. I know Ellen's probably had a good chance to review everything I submitted, including the state law on that, but I'll answer any questions that I can about that. I also have Mr. Gallo, who's going to be helping us through the process with the chief of police regarding the licensing of the facility. And so you've had all that since the twenty-eighth.
To add to the chair and Ms. McIntyre's earlier comments, my personal feeling is just that... is just that when I'm given a huge amount of information like this, I want to now go take it home and read it and not render a judgment now. And that just, it just makes it a little bit harder for me to feel like I'm having confidence in whatever I am judging.
And I will say, remember this, I, I'm not asking you to render a judgment this evening. You don't have a form. The chairman started his remarks by saying that if you took a vote tonight, it would have to be unanimous. I'm inclined, at the appropriate time, to agree to a continuance if that is what the board would like to do and be more deliberative about it. There is some material in there you might find of interest. We'd be glad to have Mr. Farm or, or Mr. Davis come back, Mr. Gallo come back. I'll come back. But there isn't anything I think that, that packet that Mr. Davis handed out tonight has to do with the operations or the safety or the governance or the oversight of the facility.
Attorney General, I think, I mean, I will add to that as well. I mean, you're lucky that I'm not cheering it, because I wouldn't hear it tonight, to be honest with you. I would throw it out. But to add to that, I think we are very clear on the five points, and I think each point that we presented and wanted more information on is, is each as important as the other. Not so much, oh, this, this has higher weight. It all matters. The whole thing matters. That little piece matters, and that little piece it does to me as well.
Well, don't construe my, don't construe my remarks to think, for you to think that I think the governance and oversight and safety are the primary concern. But I just wanted to clarify that what Mr. Davis handed out, all he had to do was really the construction of the, of the facility itself, not to do with the operation of the facility.
And, and the noise matters. It, it all matters, so. And again, nothing has higher weight than, for me.
I put a little blurb in the, in the supplemental and restated narrative regarding the noise and the, the air quality and the structure of it. But it's not at the level of detail that those two sketches that Mr. Davis presented tonight.
Your resume is a little different than theirs, so. Yours is focused more nearly on the law, theirs is on the noise and the construction. So, I mean, I have faith in what they say at, for their points.
Good.
Anything else? So just, just, come on, so we have the microphone. So just to kind of circle back, so the answer is, yes, that you had, you did, you submit a, a number of materials in, in advance of the meeting that made it to the packet, which made it to us prior to the meeting, so thank you for that. And yes, speaking for myself, I did, did take a look at that. Does not mean that I read every page, and it doesn't mean that I understand, you know, everything about it or even half of what you spent, you, you sent. So what I would like to do is kind of, kind of back that up and, and not have you necessarily rest on the, on the submissions here. I, I do appreciate the, the, the elements of interpretation and the highlights and, and the advocacy that, that you and the applicant, the applicant's consultants can provide, because the, because the, what you guys say is a lot easier for me at the end of the day to kind of understand, to remember, actually, first understand and then remember, then to go the, the page-by-page kind of, kind of thing. So, so the, like Ms. McIntyre said, so both of them are important. So I guess I would ask if you were trying to save some time, time or effort or brain cells in having us kind of rest on the submission, I'd, I'd rather less not do that and have you go through whatever, whatever presentation you had regarding the, the details of regulatory regime as a, for, for instance. That would be helpful, helpful for myself.
The details of what, Mr. Chairman?
Of the, the regulatory regime-
Oh, sure. I'd be glad to, I'd be glad to do that. So with regard to the licensing of a shooting range in Massachusetts, state law dictates that if you want to operate a shooting range in the Commonwealth, you must go to your local, first of all, you must be a federal firearms license carrier, which, which Jen Thompson is. And you must apply to the local licensing authority. In state law, that's the local chief of police under general laws, Chapter 140, Section 56A. A copy of that section of the statute is presented in the materials that we presented on the 28th of February. In addition, in order to obtain a license to sell firearms and ammunition, you must apply to the chief of police, who's the local licensing authority in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and that's under Chapter 140, Section 122 and Section 122B. Again, those sections of the statute have been provided on February the 28th, and they're in your packets. The chief of police is really, it's in his province in terms of licensing, you know, in terms of safety, operations, and everything.
I'm just, I'm sorry, I, you, you're referring to February 20th. You mean this, this packet, the one that-
Yes.
The, we receive this much, okay.
Yes. And, and so the chief is really responsible for the, the licensing and for the oversight. And so, for instance, under Chapter 140, Section 20, 123, which I've provided a copy of in your packages on the 28th, that's a rather lengthy section of the statute. That really speaks to what kinds of firearms can be sold at the facility. And again, retail's a small portion of our application, but there are certain firearms that are prohibited in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and they're listed, there were approved firearms listed by the executive officer of public safety under the governing statute, 133 and three quarters. And the attorney general, there's a letter in there from the attorney general that sort of summarizes those provisions. If there's any vi, and, and, so all sales of, of firearms in the facility would, would need to be reported to the Department of Criminal Justice Information Systems, who keeps, they, they, they get a, an electronic, if you will, report of every transaction. So if we sold a firearm up on Holt Road, that would be reported to them. They monitor that, so if there's any firearm that should not have been sold, it would be reported to the chief of police, who could act and suspend or revoke the license. So there's sort of a checks and balances with regard to sale of firearms. Yes?
Kevin, just, I remember at maybe the first meeting, the, the, the chief of police is, the more that we're talking, becomes a more integral piece in this whole project in terms of the license and so on. And I remember early on, at the first meeting, there was comments that, that you had been to the police and that, you weren't at the meeting, of course, the first one, but, but there, I remember the comments that we had been to the police and that, this takes us back to a couple, three months ago now, and that we were going to get a letter that the police had, policeman had approved it. Okay. And then that topic came up again at, at the second meeting. Okay, I've never seen closure on the policeman's involvement. Okay, now, and I'm not asking for that now, but I see in your packet the letter January 31st, and, and, and as you talk, Kevin, because he's such an integral, integral player in this whole project, my mind is still back where, well, whatever happened to his approval and the letters that we asked about a couple of months ago. So I'm sorry for, for making, for taking us back, but I'm just trying to, I need to get clarity on that in order to go forward.
Okay. So what's your question?
My question was, there was going to be a letter that he had approved, and there was a letter from him, and that, and I've never heard anything further. And then there is this letter to, that you sent to him, and you're talking about how important he is, but I don't know what the response to this letter is.
Well, there hasn't been any response to that letter. I think the purpose of that letter is to make sure that the chief was aware, and I understood that he was aware from my, I, I told you at the last meeting that I appeared, that I knew the town had reached out to the chief and talked to the professionals in the town, but not, not to me directly. So I sent a letter making sure the chief was aware of what we were doing with regard to these boards, not with regard to the process that I'm undertaking with him now to get the license under the state law. And so I don't think for any, I don't think that we can force the chief, and I don't think, he's probably going to weigh in on what you do here, nor do I think that you're going to weigh in on what his province is in terms of issuing the license, Steve. So we couldn't force the chief, in other words, to send you a letter saying, "Hey, you know, grant them a special permit, because I, I think this is fine." What he's going to do is do his due diligence and see whether or not a license ought to be authorized and granted to us to operate the shooting range and to sell, retail firearms and guns. So we didn't get any letter from the chief, if that's what you're asking me, to the board, saying that you ought to grant the special permit, because I don't have any problems with this, because he's just picking up the baton now to start his due diligence on the process we've started with him. So we don't have a letter from the chief for this board. I'm not anticipating we're going to have a letter for the chief, for the planning board, nor do I suspect that the chief of police is going to ask you for a letter. He's going to see whether or not the board is going to approve and grant the special permit to us, and he's going to independently decide whether or not a license for operations and the sale of guns and firearms up there ought to be approved by him. That's clearly in his province. I don't think he's going to invade your province with a letter. So I could never force the chief to send you a letter saying, "This is okay." I mean, we invited, in my letter that's in your packet on January the 31st, we invited to him, and I sent that to the, I sent that to the planning board, into the ZBA, the day. It went in the mail, but I understood, having come around Town Hall, that, that they, I don't know what happened to it, so I decided to have that submitted in the package on the 28th to make sure you knew that we had reached out to the chief. And if you read the letter, it just says, "Hey, here's what we're doing. Let us know if you have any, any questions or, or any concerns about it." I, I can only answer and say to you that I have not heard from the chief of any concerns whatsoever about what we're doing before the ZBA. No concerns whatsoever, whatsoever.
Thank you. No, the only rea, I just, I'm going to, my last comment, the only reason I brought it up was because, because I was expecting an approval based on what was said. So you've, you've now clarified things. Thank you.
And so, just to continue on, Mr. Chairman, so in, in the package that I submitted on the 28th, there is, there's a series of flow charts.
Because I know questions came up, and I saw, I might as well take the opportunity now to try to address those. And, you know, again, this is an area that's probably going to be- It's probably going to be addressed by the chief in terms of whether or not to grant an operational license to us, but let me see if I can find you the last two pages in the package that was submitted on the 28th of February. Because these questions certainly came up when I was present about, you know, how's this going to work? It's a security flow chart, and again, these are just to give some understanding to the board about how it would work. And I'm on the one that says, "Security flow chart, general public." So if a prospective person wanted to come in to shoot that, that does not have a license to carry, we could allow that person to shoot under certain circumstances. They would be greeted by someone at a door that would have some interaction with them, take a look at them, their demeanor, their manner of speak, to make sure that the, there's, they, they, they feel as though they're okay, they're, they're sober, they're not under the influence of anything. They'd be required to complete a questionnaire and a waiver form, and also a, a safety course as, as indicated in the, the flow map. That course would take somewhere between 15 and 30 minutes, depending on how quickly the person could grasp it. It's basic safety in terms of, you know, what they're going to do when they go in there, that you always keep the, the gun down range, you, you don't arm it, you follow instructions, you know, the basic instructions on how to do it to make sure that, that there's no problems with them. If they, if that particular guest decided to come back within a year, we'd have to make a decision whether or not they'd have to go through that safety training again. If it's six months, I don't suspect that they would have to go through it. Then the guest would, the guest would be able to go on and rent the gun and sign up and, and be directed by the range operator, the range supervisor to where they're going to shoot, and it would keep their information on file. A single guest will not be allowed to come in and, and rent a firearm and use the range. They'd have to be accompanied by, by another person. So that's the, that's the-
I'm sorry, what's that? If one person can't come in?
Yeah, one person alone would not be able to do that. They'd have to be accompanied by somebody else.
This is adding, but that doesn't include after-hours usage, right?
Guests would not be allowed to be, come in after hours. That's the second flow chart. It's the security flow map for after-hours, which I'd like to discuss.
I, I have a license, and I cannot come in as one single person to come in and shoot at the range?
No, that's going to be the, that's going to be the policy. They'd have to, they'd have to have somebody else with them. They wouldn't be able to come in.
She has a license. She has a license to carry a guest.
Oh.
If you do not have a license for-
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
And I have to be accompanied by someone who does? Okay.
So on the security flow map for after-hours, because the, what we're proposing is a 20-
Can I just go back to this? And so this process is a lot, is, would you say, from beginning to actually holding a gun, an hour approximately?
Approximately. Forty-five minutes to an hour, depending on how quickly they grasp, if they've never used a gun. Some people have shot before, they don't have a license to carry. So it's all kind of fact-dependent. With, yes?
Just, did I just hear that, okay, if you need to, you need to be accompanied with someone? Did I hear that at least one of the two has to be licensed to carry? Is that what I heard?
Yes, so that's after-hours, that's-
We're not talking about after-hours.
Is it, is the being accompanied, is that just another human being, or is that someone who is licensed to carry?
No. It, it has to be at least, it has to be someone over 21 years of age with them.
But I can come into the area for, to, to get a license to do a course. I don't, it, this is strictly-
This is for shooting.
Strictly the shooting range portion of the facility.
Sure.
So I can go to the other end and do, or I can go upstairs and do virtual? So this is strictly the first-floor licensed-
This is live shooting.
Live, okay.
Yeah, that's what that flow chart is, just live shooting. Yeah. The security flow chart for after-hours, it's restricted to members only, although a member can bring one guest after hours. So they must be licensed to carry, which means they have to have, had gone through a background check and so forth, they have a license to carry. And so they, they're given a key fob that can be swiped at the outside door, they enter into a vestibule, they have a, they have to use a biometric lock, and then the member will have access. The lights and the ventilation will come on automatically. They'll be granted access to the range and the bathrooms only.
What kind of biometrics are you considering here? Sorry?
So though, that, that's primarily what I had, Mr. Chairman, in terms of presentation on the governance and oversight.
So what you told me, though, back on the, the first chart, it's just, be accompanied by someone aged 21 or older is, satisfies the requirement.
For general public.
You know, I can tell you that in, in discussions with, with Jen and about what may be required by the chief, that, you know, the chief may require more than that, you know, without wanting to take much of the police department's time. They may want to periodically check our questionnaires to make sure that, to run it through to see if someone, if someone came in as a guest and checked off that they had, you know, they had not been convicted of a crime or something like that, and they may periodically grab those and do a QC on them, and we find out that that person actually lied, they won't be allowed to ever come back and shoot there again.
And the member as well?
Well, if a member lies, but if a-
No, the member's guests. I mean, they should be liable to.
No, we're talking about the general public just coming in to rent for the first time without a member.
So my issue lies with a, a member bringing a guest. So I, after-hours. I mean, again, I'm still, we're, I'm still hesitant on the after-hours with members coming in and, and then you're going to add in a guest with something unattent, so for me, I have real issue with that. I'm, I mean, I don't know how you're going to-
Well, we're going to work with the chief on it. I think most of these ranges, and Jerry, how many ranges have you been to in your career?
At least a hundred.
And most of the ranges are, are open 24 hours for members, and members are allowed to bring one guest.
Without anyone there? Without any, they're open 24/7?
That's what we're proposing.
Without anyone working there, watching the facility?
They, they wouldn't be able to get into the retail area, the VIP lounges or anything else. They'd only be able to go in and use the range. Oh, by the way, I meant to say in my presentation with regard to the retail part, because I know there were questions about lead and, and, and stuff like that, what we're proposing is that we're going, the ammunition that we're going to sell, the MMD ammunition that we're going to sell is going to be low lead. And the reason we're doing the air gun range upstairs is that live ammunition is so expensive anyway. We want to make sure it gets the same feel and the same sort of technique and the safety for use and proper handling of a firearm as it does with live ammunition. But the low lead is something that we've been looking at. We haven't quite decided what we're going to use for a vendor on that, but that's what we're going to be selling, low- selling, low lead ammunition.
So can we go back to this after-hours one? If a member brings a guest, how do you monitor that? There, you have a license to carry?
It's all going to be, it's all going to be recorded. You know, we're going to, we're going to have the member sign something of who they're going to sign into the facility. And so, you know, we're not just going to have unidentified people coming into the facility. So when a member comes in with a biometric fingerprint, we're going to know that member entered at, you know, 11 o'clock at night, and they're going to have to say who they had come in with them.
So it's kind of like an approved guest?
It's not going to be a pre-approved guest, it's going to be a guest, and so...
And just, so I also understand, so when someone comes in after-hours, I assume they will be bringing their own weapon, they will not have one that's stored in a locker on site, or what will that look like?
We may, we may have some weapons stored on-site, because we're going to have some, some, some firearms stored on-site for sale, so we may make that available to members, some storage of weapons.
Okay. And ammunition, you said, you said the retail's not going to be open?
No, it will not.
So will they have to bring their own ammunition?
They will.
Okay.
Or it'll have to be stored in their locker on-site.
Gotcha.
But they don't have access to the, so you're going to have to make the lockers...
Accessible.
Yeah, accessible to the shooting area. Because you're making it sound like they're just going to this little narrow path to the shooting area, and then they leave, but if they're going to have it on-site, it's...
And, and the lockers, will they be locked by the customer's own system, like, you know, at a gym, or will it be something standardized for you guys? Like, what does that look like?
We're going to have to work that out with the chief, whether we're even going to have lockers there, but we're thinking that for at least the law enforcement officers, they may not want to be lugging back and forth their, their firearms, so we may make, make that available. We're going to at least offer it. We think it makes sense. And I know it's one of the concerns that people had about people walking in and out of there with a firearm, someone might jump them or something like that, so maybe we...
So I'm glad that you created the flow charts. That was, that was one of the things, to me, that was most important. And now, what I'm hearing is that this is what you're proposing, and that ultimately, the police chief is the one that, that will have to approve this, correct?
Well, it may be stricter than what we're proposing. It may be different than what we're proposing.
Let me add just one more thing before I let you. And so, thank you for putting this together, and, and just, I'm not a shooter, but the, but the area that, in my mind, that continues to concern me is the guests. Okay, so on the, if it's, on the first chart, the guest, if you're 21, I mean, okay, so who are, who's being brought in? And then on the other chart, the member, who do they bring? Okay, so I, I'm just saying that as, as a neophyte to guns, those are just things that look, and that's why I'm saying, okay, Steve, let it go, because the chief will be involved with this. Is that...
I think that, I think that's a fair position to take, really. I mean, ultimately, with regard to the operations, it's clearly in the chief's province on how it's going to work, but I know those, you know, it'd be unfair for me to come in here when those questions were asked by this board last, last time, to come in with some specific proposal, as what we're proposing. But I think we're going to work out the details of that with the chief.
So for, for me, working out the details should be done here, too. So, I mean, I understand that the chief has...
Well, I've, I've tried to, I've tried to give specific responses to the questions that I was asked last time, and looked at the film from the time before, so if I've left something out, you can ask me now. What, what details have I left out, Ellen?
I, the specifics, I mean, I don't want to have to be like after, like after the fact, well, let the chief decide, and I don't want you to have to come back if you have to change anything. I mean, if you're going to have members coming in after-hours, and they're going to have a place to store their gun, I'd like to see where it is on here. Because if you're going to block off X area at night, where are they going to have access?
See, I, I really think that's really in the chief of police's province, so we haven't decided that we're going to allow people to store guns there, but it is something we're going to talk to the chief about. But I think that's clearly in his province, in terms of the use of the facility. We're proposing 24-hour access under these specific conditions.
But you're asking...
He may not, he may not want us to do that.
But you're asking this board for a special permit, and that, we, I mean...
For use.
Correct.
For recreational use and industrial...
This is part of the use. If you're going to use, use this at night, use, what am I, my cousin Vinnie, use, if you're going to use this at night.
Well, I'll go with this, I'll go with this answer, then. Right now, there's no proposal in front of you to put lockers. I just wanted to tell you, because a question was asked, that we may. It's not in front of you, so as we stand here right now, we're not, we're not proposing any lockers for anybody. They're going to bring in their own firearms, bring in their own ammunition. But the caveat being that we may talk to the chief, if that makes sense, and he's okay with that, then...
So this is helping me to understand, like, the whole process. I mean, again, we've never done this, so telling me that, okay, this is what we're going to present, but we might change it because...
Well, I'm not, we're not changing it.
Not, not saying anything shady or anything.
I'm not saying that. That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying, you have a proposal in front of you for 24-hour access, no lockers. You asked me about lockers? I said we may talk to the chief about that, but we may not end up doing that.
But if you, if you want to put it that way, then we might put a stipulation saying no lockers.
Go ahead.
And you would have to come back if you wanted to have...
That's fine.
Okay.
That's fine. Does that, I hope that answers that question. That's fine with us. I mean, we're just trying to say what makes sense, or do what makes sense and what's reasonable.
So that's, I mean, it's not uncommon. You know, there's, there's just a tension for an applicant has to go before several boards. I mean, everybody has their turn, everybody has, everybody has their say, and what, what I think you know that we're, we're guarding against is kind of the worst-case scenario, the things that we are most uncomfortable with, end up being approved by the chief, and then, you know, the, the horse has left the barn kind of thing. So that's, I think, where some of the, some of the focus is here, when Ellen suggests that, well, those are the details that need to be worked out here. I couldn't, I couldn't agree with her more, and, at the, in the very same breath, I'm a guy who has to believe in the chief of police, and how responsible he is going to be in handling a responsible applicant who has a request for, you know, lockers kind of thing.
I'm sort of in your court with that, with Mr. Chairman. Knowing the chief, as I know him, he's someone that takes his job very seriously. This is not something that he's dealt with before in his career. In fact, I think there are very few chiefs of police in the Commonwealth that deal with this particular issue. I'm sure he's going to do his due diligence, and he may, or may not, I don't know what he's going to do, approve of it, but we're going to work with him and work out all the details. And I think that this board can rest assured, with regard to safety, security, operation, and oversight of the facility, it's the local chief of police who happens to be right down the street from the proposed facility, that'll, that'll keep a close eye on it. And quite frankly, I will say this, that we're, we're considering this to be somewhat of a, somewhat of a public-private partnership. We're going to offer to law enforcement from the surrounding communities that opportunity, because education is a strong component, an integral and central component of what we're doing. Safety, and proper handling of firearms, and a lot of the law enforcement officials, they don't really get the opportunity that they should have. This would be a great local use for the, in this particular location, for this particular site, for, for a shooting range and a training facility of this sort, both for North Andover, this community as a boon, and also for the surrounding communities, including the, the county law enforcement officials, including the sheriff's department. And I've had some conversations with them about that, because right now, they go up to North Shore Community College, and then they're off to Fort Devens on their firearms, their firearms part of their program. So, having it here in North Andover, I think would be a great, a great, a great use of that facility. And I do trust the chief will do a great job, and if he does issue a license to condition it.
I, I, I mean, I trust that as well, and I'm, I, I share the compulsion that the, my fellow board members do, that we want to be as thorough as we can at, at this stage as well. So the, I think kind of the punctuation to that is, I imagine that you, you know the drill. We've been through the drill as well, there are a handful of conditions, know that are going to set something like, in accordance with the plans submitted by the applicant, blah, 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 and material deviations from the plans will require you to return to this board, and what's encouraging, and I think really kind of, I take some of the load off of my shoulders in hearing you say, "No problem, we will," you know, "we're happy to come back if there are changes after we go through the chief's processes," is really helpful, because I think where, what Ellen is trying to guard, and what the other board members are trying to guard, is we want to save you that trip. And it's entirely possible we can't save you that trip, but I think that's kind of like, there are two, two separate virtues going on here, and they, they don't necessarily jive all the time, so we're trying to do the virtue of make, make things a little bit easier for the applicant on the other end of a ZBA decision, and you're trying to make things as, as easy as possible for the board, and saying that, well, that's kind of up to the, up to the chief. So, so I think we're just trying to meet there, that's all.
And I, I think sometimes when you see, you know, if we're fortunate enough to obtain the approval here, sometimes when you see the decisions, and you see a decision from another board, and then another authority, the police, sometimes a default of the conditions in one would be a default in the other, so it would really, oftentimes you'll see that. And so, if we did something that was with the chief that was in default, I think that would trigger a default with him as well. So, I, I'm anticipating that's the way he's going to look at this as well, so. It makes sense. I don't know if the board has any other questions. Mr. Chairman, I mean, we'd be, I don't know when, you're meeting again in April, but we'd be, we'd be happy to continue. I know you don't have a full board here this evening, and sign a waiver for the time constraints.
Yep, and the, the other board members, you know, assuming that there are others that arrive in, in April, in order to advance this thing, will, will need to rehabilitate their understanding of the record by watching the, watching the tape and reading the minutes and stuff, so that they, they will be as, as informed as we are tonight. They will not have had the opportunity to make, have questions tonight, obviously, but at least they will have heard the, the dialogue that's occurred here tonight. So that's certain, sensible. I'm sure we're headed in, in that direction. None of that is to say, you know, we're necessarily cutting off the conversation now, so if there's anything else, you know, on, on your mind, let's fire it out there. If not, then I'll call for the comments from the gallery, if any.
Where do you stand with that? Planning?
We're, we're back before planning on the 24th of this month.
Of this month?
Yes.
And what were their requests? To, to get more, the same information that we...
They had some, some of the concerns, and they also had some concerns about the parking, because we're seeking a special permit, because we're going to be having more parking. It, it triggers a site plan review, because we're increasing the parking by five parkings, more than five parking spaces, so it triggers site plan review. So we've, we have revised plans with regard to that as well.
So I think you submitted it to us as well, with the red, with the...
Yeah, we did that, because we had submitted the original plans to you, so we thought it made sense to give you the same plan.
Which I appreciate, by the way, so there is a...
Yeah, I, I just think that everybody should get all that information, so you know...
You added the parking just because of mixed use?
Well, it, it's interesting, because without getting too much involved with the parking, I met with the building inspector last week. We've sort of gone back and forth a little bit on the parking. That revised plan, for whatever reason, our engineer left off some existing parking spaces that are already on there, so I'm anticipating we may have to revise that further. And in addition, the way we calculate the parking, really, it's, it's really based on the square footage of the building, so we're going to be seeking a little bit greater waiver from the parking in that than, than what I had submitted to the planning board, so. I'll have to deal with that on the 24th.
Did you know I was going to be reading this? Because I can't, I can't see, so I...
No, that, actually, that, those aren't the ones that I, I gave to, to be submitted. They're even smaller than that, so I'm glad you got the larger version of it. A chap, I think it's, section 23 is like, it's a sure cure for insomnia, I can tell you that.
So, I mean, we, you have, can we just discuss some of the other points?
Please do.
The security, and, I mean, why your hair, security and safety plan, I think you submitted in here as well, which is pretty much, did anything change from the other one that was submitted, or...
No, I, I just don't think we had flushed it out with those flow charts, the way we had proposed.
The flow chart.
Oh, yeah, that's, that was the mail that took two weeks, yes, that we have here. Actually, it did show up the next day.
That's right. You still thinking, Ms. McIntyre, formulating?
I'm not. I'm good. Thank you.
Anything from this end? Before we put up to the gallery, Ms. Hutchins, are there any...
Larger size bore you going to allow in there? What's the larger size bore caliber you going to allow in there?
It's a 7.62 with 300.
It's a military? So during the hours, there's always going to be a range officer there?
Yep. Yes.
And they'll have to be NRA certified?
Yes.
And what's your regular hours? Do you have your deterrent?
Only until 10:00.
Do you anticipate your heaviest traffic would probably be after people get out of work?
Yeah. That's what I'm thinking. So, yeah, for the handgun, it was 50 thou, and then 308 rifle. What?
And weekends.
You good? All right. With that, then, if there's anyone in the gallery that wishes to be heard on this matter, you are certainly invited to take the podium. Any questions that you want to ask, please ask them through the board, through the applicant. Seeing and hearing none, just a courtesy, anything else, folks, kind of thing? Anything else kind of in closing before we continue? All right. And the, I'm sorry, the meeting next month is what date?
April 14th.
April 14th. Shall there be a, a motion to continue?
Some vote.
Motion made?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. We are continued to April 14th. Thank you all.
Thank you for your time.
Next item on the agenda, we have a new hearing, 5557 Ferber Avenue. In the, in the absence of our clerk this evening, Ms. McIntyre, would you like the honor of reading the notice?
I don't have any notice in my packet, so...
Would you like to pass that on?
Do you have a notice, a packet, a notice? So, for me, it's not a new hearing, this is a, this is a modification, so it's not considered a new hearing? So I think it's labeled wrong?
I think we got, didn't we get some guidance on that? This is, I think it is a new hearing.
So if it's a new hearing, there was no, I have nothing in my packet with a notification, or a... I don't think you did either.
I do not either.
So, nothing was, was advertised?
Yes, a legal notice.
So I don't have a legal notice in my packet?
Yes.
Does anyone else?
I do not. I do not get into my packet.
So for future applications, legal notice, legal notices need to be...
Part of the packet.
Be part of our packet? So do you want me to do the car, car commercial? I certainly can. So I, I'm interpreting this as a modification, not a new, maybe we can discuss it after we open it. Why, why you consider it new? Okay, you ready? Notice is hereby given that the board appeals will hold a public hearing at the senior center at 120 R Main Street, North Andover, Mass. on Tuesday, March 10, 2020, at 7:30 PM, to all parties interested in the petition of Megan Long for property at 55 to 57 Ferber Ave., MAP 081.0, parcel 0054, North Andover, Mass., 01845, R4 zoning district. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to town on North Andover by law, section 195-4.3A, resident 4 district, to demolish an existing single-family home and detached garage, and construct a new home in the R4 zoning district. Specifically, applicant has requested two residential buildings per lot, one residential, one residential building per lot allowed, needed a relief, variance of one residential building. Applicant supporting materials available for review at the office zoning department located 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, from the hours of 8:00 to 4:00, Tuesday, from the hours of 8:00 to 5:30, and Friday, from the hours of 8:00 to 11:30, by the auto board of appeals. D. Paul Koch, chairman.
Thank you, Ms. McIntyre. With that, with the applicant for 5557 Ferber, come out up to the podium. With that, with the applicant for 5557 Ferber, come on up to the podium. If you would, just introduce yourself with your name and address or affiliation to this matter, please.
Yes, my name is Brendan Larkin. My wife, the applicant, is Megan Larkin.
Thank you.
Our attorney wasn't available tonight. He, he had a sketch, a sketch and conflict. So speaking on behalf of ourselves.
Then we will do the best we can. So Ms. McIntyre, I don't have a clear recollection of what this was, but I think that we got some direction. It's not clear what a, you know, what the distinction is between modification and a, and a new hearing. And since this went in such a, in what appeared to be kind of a material direction, which was different from what we had before, full on. This is just, this is just the path that went. I think it's just a, a different path to the same end, just trying to get relief, whether it's a modification or a new hearing. Is there, is there something significant that was missed in the conversations along the way perhaps?
So I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just a little confused. So we already heard this in December, approved it, and then you're coming and ask us for a modification. I was just curious why it is considered new. Don't we deem it, don't we see if it's modified and if it's a?
I think the trick is what's a modification? Like there's, I don't necessarily see, when, when looking for it, don't necessarily see a, a path. Like what's a modification? What's the, what's the procedure for a modification? How is that different from a full application? So in an effort to be in an overabundance of caution, treat it as a new application.
Correct. So the path possibly that could have been taken is we deem it in, in this board as a modification, minor or major. If it's major, you would have to do this path. And I, I can see what you're doing. You come and be, you know, you're being proactive in applying for a new application. And, and that's my confusion of?
So that would be a two-step process. An applicant would have to come in, say, is this material or not? Material or not? Then if it, if it is material, then we kick, kick, kick it out and come back, say, come back in a month?
Right. But my confusion is what path do we go down? Do we treat it as new or do we treat it as a modification right now? Because you're, because you're here before us, it's a new application?
Yes, treated, treated as new. And so as, as, when, if and or when a decision is made for this matter, it will, it will just kind of undo the prior decision back in whatever it was, October.
December? October? December?
Well, that was the application, was, the application was October. The decision was December 10th, yes.
Okay. All right.
Okay. So, good evening, everybody. So back in December 10th, 2019, we went with the board regarding 5557 Ferber Ave. We requested a variance to demo the existing single-family home located on the property and replace it by rebuilding a new single-family home in a different location on the lot. At that meeting, that, that variance was granted. Since that time, my wife and I have met with the architect for the, for the home to finalize the construction drawings and attend to getting started on the project. But after discussions regarding the floor plans and layout of the new home, he suggested making the family room a little bit bigger in order to suit our family's needs. We spoke to the building inspector regarding the tent, the tented changes to the house plan. He said the change would constitute an insignificant change to the plan, but unfortunately, it is not as simple as making a change on a plan and pulling a building permit. He explained to us we would have to go in front of the board once again. Original approved house plan shows a family room that is 14 by 28. We're here to request a modification to the approved house plan to make the family room an additional two feet bigger, bringing the family room size from 14 by 28 to 16 by 28. The total square foot increase to the home would be, would be amount to 48 square feet. The extra two feet of the foundation footprint would extend into the driveway area and by doing so would not create any additional impervious area to the original approved site plan. Everything else on the original approved site plan from December 10th, December 10th meeting would remain the same.
So can you show us on your map the differences you're going to, from prior to what you need? Okay.
So basically, it's 14 by 24, just approved.
Okay.
So the new? For the new family room, it's going from 14 to 16, so it'd be two feet bigger, which would enter into the, into the driveway area.
But you're not requiring any more variances. You're just modifying your plan to add two feet?
Yeah.
On the rear?
It'd be on the, so the face of the house would be here, so it'd be on the, on the face of the house, on the right hand side.
The right, okay. The right-hand side.
Remember when we talked about the, the driveway? And that, I remember we just had some discussion about trying to minimize the asphalt.
That is substantially less than the?
You had a diagram and you were, so we, I remember talking about that. Does this in any way affect that, that discretion? I mean, has it changed?
No, the, the driveway has actually gotten smaller simply for the fact that the two feet is going and encroaching into the driveway more.
The driveway is the same size. You've just encroached more on the driveway with the house change.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
I don't need to hear much more.
Can I discuss procedure a little more because it's just, I'm still not done with that?
Please.
So for me, I would have done, I, I, I'm thinking, just to talk it out, I would have actually done both. I would have requested a modification first and then had, had this and a backup? Because I see this more as a modification, insignificant modification as opposed to a new application and withdrawn the, the variance if the modification passed. So that's the process I would have gone through?
We would have rather go through that process also if that was?
Because I, I don't see this as new at all. I don't see this as a new hearing.
I, I think I'm on the same wave as you and I.
So for me, that's where I'm, I'm just a little stuck. So, I mean, I think I probably would have done both at the same time.
Totally fair. Does that change the outcome?
No.
Okay.
Absolutely not.
Then I guess, is there anyone in the gallery that wishes to be heard?
Russell Mercier. I live at 41 Summit Street. My house is directly behind the brand-new structure. We're looking forward to?
41 Summit, you said, I think?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So my house is directly behind their, their new structure. We're looking forward to the, you know, the construction of the, of the house, having new neighbors. I just wanted to make sure that everything that was in the original decision will be rolled over into this one. That's, that's the only, you know, stipulation I have.
That would be my expectation and you'll hear, I think, the rest to the extent that there are conditions in the, in the original decision, we will read them tonight.
Right. Like the fencing and the water container and whatever. Yep.
Yeah.
Other than that, we're fine.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else in the gallery that wishes to be heard on this matter? All right. Anything?
Could I, could I see the decision actually?
You have it.
You gave it back.
Have they ordered the conditions in that?
Ellen, where is, where is the information? In other words, who would be giving direction, telling someone it's a modification in lieu of a new submission? Who, where would that direction come from?
So that direction would come with the town officials, but it's up to our board to decide if it was a major or minor modification. And I understand the direction that was taken because if we deem that this was major and they'd have to file a new application, then that's another two months that the applicant's out. So that's, I mean, a lot of people don't want to roll that dice.
It's a mess either way.
Yes. So again, by doing both of them satisfies?
So it starts with Paul then?
Pretty much, yeah.
No, yes, it does.
Yeah.
All right.
So this is the guidance we were brought to. Because there is no guidance on what is modification and what isn't. So you need to clear that up, to be honest.
And again, it's not for, for the, when you're called to decide. I don't know that your official, like, they change the titles all the time. Are you inspector of buildings? Are building inspector or?
Zoning enforcement officer.
Zoning enfor- okay.
Inspector of buildings, an ADA officer.
It's like a royal title.
Protector.
Protector of the board.
Father of dragons.
So, Mr. Mercier, could you, could you come on back up? I just want to confirm something or some things with you. So my, my notes, you know, that there's a, there's a mea culpa involved here because conditions didn't make it actually into the decision. So I'm glad that you brought them up. What I do is have some notes suggesting that some of the conditions that were talked about way back when were that there was a six-inch vinyl fence, which is already agreed to by the applicant. And that may have actually appeared on the plan, which is why I did?
Yeah, that's what they agreed to. That's fine, yep.
And then I'll, I'll, I'll ask. Nice, nice and loud for the microphone. Was that, is that on the plan?
Yes, it's on the plan. It's indicated.
Then that's likely why. And there was a, a question about snow storage? I think that we, was, in the water runoff?
Something about a, a container to hold the water from the snow that'll be coming from both directions.
So I think you have?
Both at the end of the street, on Summit Street, where the town just plows it all out.
So you mean the snow melts, like when the snow starts melting?
And then from their driveway where their snow is going to come, it's going to come into?
So it looks like, and perhaps we'll ask the applicant, Ms. McIntyre is pointing to a point on the plan where there's an infiltration fence in the, in the?
I don't know what it's called, but supposedly it's a container that's going to grab the water.
Yeah, I think that's?
And then disperse it slowly or something.
At least on the, so the, the applicant only control what's, what's on his property, not necessarily what's at the end of Summit Street, what the, what the town does? So what he has on his plan is there is an infiltration fence at the top of his driveway for, which would have, which would, it would make sense that it's for that purpose. Because there, there, those aren't like normal.
Yeah. I mean, the thing is, is we get the town snow from the street at the end of Summit Street, which is right in front of my house. And then in the past, we've had a lot of water runoff where there was trees and stuff before. But now with their driveway coming, you know, right up to the same section where the end of the street.
So I, I will add that there's a second infiltration fence also on the, the existing building that has sparking spots.
Yeah.
And that there's a detail at the bottom of the drawing out describing what that infiltration trench will look like.
Okay. So those, those were two of the items and I think they're satisfied in the plan, which is why they didn't appear as, as written.
Yeah, I just, all I came to ta- to say tonight was that I, we agreed to it before, we agree to it now. With the addition of the two extra feet of, on the house, as long as the other stipulations, you know, were carried over, that's all.
Understood. That's helpful. Thank you very much for your time. So you are, you are assembling a recitation?
I am.
Anything else from the board, innocent? And I'll say, if you could come back up, I'll articulate the same thing to you that I did to the prior applicant, which is that because there are only four members sitting tonight, that the vote would, tonight would need to be unanimous in order to, to be approved. Ordinarily, there are five members, you'd need the four. Tonight, because there are only four, we need, it needs to be unanimous. So with, with that in mind, I always offer the option to the applicant, which is that do you want to proceed tonight with a vote from the four members that are here? Or do you want to kick this off to April 14th to have a fifth member on, in the hearing and voting?
That's the boss, yeah. Yeah, and I say we go ahead with the decision tonight.
Okay. Thank, thank you very much. We'll give Ms. McIntyre a moment to assemble the documentation so that she can make a motion?
Make a motion to close the hearing?
So, uh, second.
Motion made and there was a rush to second. Thank you both gentlemen. I will give it to, give it to Mike.
I was beaten, but that's okay.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No, so, so the public hearing is closed. Deliberation's been bored. Anything we need to talk about?
It's very straightforward.
Very straightforward. Don't see a lot to talk about. Then with that, is there a motion, Ms. McIntyre?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to grant the variance for petition of Megan Long for property at 55 to 57 Ferber Ave, map 081.0, parcel 0054, in the R4 zoning district. The zoning bylaw, section 195 dash 4.3. And I'm going to reference the survey plan by Ferber, no. By Andover Consultants dated November 13th, revised January 27th. The floor plans by Colonial Drafting, one, two. Is there a difference between the two? Dated, the revised one, January 14th. Two pages. And that's it?
It looks like just a do.
Yep. That was October 16th. It looks like it was revised. And I am going to condition it with the existing conditions referenced in the original application. Petition 2019 dash 14 for hearing dates, November 12th, 2019, December, in December 10th, 2019. Conditions noted in this application as well to carry over with this. So, anything else?
Thank you. Anything to be added to the motion, gentlemen?
Nope.
Nope. Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? We'll call, call the roll, starting with Ms. McIntyre.
Aye.
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 I am an aye. Four ayes. This is unanimously approved. Thank you very much. Last items on the agenda, there are miscellaneous correspondence, two letters from Chappa, a letter from Brock and Scott, a letter from Community Housing. We don't necessarily need, there's no action by the board. There can certainly be conversation or commentary from the board, not compulsory. I don't have anything to add.
Nope. Nothing to add here.
Nothing to be added? That looks like we are at item six on the agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made. Is there a second? Steve's second, motion made and said, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.